Are we set here? Thank you. This study session of the Board of Education for October 15th is called to order. Welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. This meeting has been televised live, then will replay throughout the next two weeks. Please check the board website for replay time. I want to start by thanking the Tax Supervising and Taxing Commission that just concluded a meeting here and basically a hearing on the school bond that is coming up for a vote on November 6th. I hope everybody gets out there and votes. We need your support. Also wanted to acknowledge the presence of PSU students. One of our former colleagues, Delafrous Williams, has a tendency to try to get them out to this board meetings. I'm not sure. Where are they? So, thank you all for being present. I see Mr. Poe now is in the ranks of a student with Delafrous. Okay. Anyway, welcome. And I know you probably follow up with individual board members in regards to what our experience is here, if I remember that assignment that Delafrous gives. But we look forward to that email if there are follow-up questions. We're going to start with a public comment. Has anybody signed up for a public comment?
Yes, we have one. Kathryn Dunn.
Hi. Ms. Dunn. Have you testified before the board?
I have not.
Okay. It's pretty simple. We're here to listen and pay us close attention to. We just asked you be respectful as you address the board members and also staff. And you have about three minutes. Lights will come on. When you have two minutes left, the yellow light will come on and then the red light will come on. And at that point, the buzzer will sound and we ask you to conclude your comments at that point. So, we thank you in advance for being here.
Okay, thank you. Shall I just go ahead and start? Okay. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Kathryn Dunn and this is my husband, Brian Ormiston. We are here seeking guidance and support from the Portland Public Schools. We hope for an advocate within the PPS system who can support our goal of getting our daughter, Julia, into the Mandarin immersion program this year for first grade. We believe she should be granted entry because she was the first and only child on the waiting list and five students have withdrawn from the program. Julia did not get into kindergarten via the lottery last year. She was waitlisted. We petitioned through PPS and we qualified for a hardship case. Sadly, there was no space as the classes were filled to capacity. So, we took out a loan and sent Julia to the International School for Kindergarten with a determination to try again for first grade. Last February, we once again went to the required meeting, filled out a petition, qualified for a hardship case, and became number one on the waiting list for first grade. Julia was in fact the only kid on the waiting list for first grade. This summer, we sold our house and now rent in the Woodstock neighborhood while we actively look for a home to buy in district. At the start, over the summer, three kids disenrolled from first grade. At the start of the year, another one dropped out. Now, there is a fifth. We continue however to be told there is no space for Julia even when five children have left the program. Over the past five months, I have made multiple attempts to contact Principal Patterson. I have telephoned, leaving messages, requesting to meet with her in person. I have stopped by the Woodstock front office. I even dropped by a letter with her assistant. It was our wish to introduce ourselves, have a dialogue, and find out the reasons why when five students withdraw, there is not room for one to enroll. I understand she is very busy, yet I also find it remarkable that in five months, I have not had the opportunity to speak with her directly. It is not my intention to offend Principal Patterson by seeking assistance from you, but I feel as though I have hit a dead end. I simply cannot understand how a public school can turn down one student when five have withdrawn from the program. The Japanese program at Richmond capped their classes at 28. The Russian program have 29 kids in their first grade classes. Woodstock has 27 in one class and 28 in the other. Why isn't there room for one more? Please allow Julia entry into first grade this year or at the very least compromise with us. Keep the waiting list intact with Julia number one. For the past two years, we have done everything asked of us by Woodstock Elementary and the PPS Office of Enrollment and Transfer. It would be devastating if another family decided this year on a whim that they would like to try and transfer and got in ahead of us. Our motivation to be here tonight is our daughter. We brought Julia home from China when she was 14 months. She has grown into a delightful and inquisitive six-year-old girl. She loves to play dress-up, swing on the monkey bars, draw from her imagination, and play with her friends. What she loves most however is learning Mandarin. Her passion is our passion. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to be here tonight. We greatly appreciate your time.
Thank you. And one of the things that I didn't mention at the, as I was mentioning in terms of the guidance, is that we don't necessarily engage in regards to the testimony that is given here, but our staff will follow up. So, if you can provide your contact information to Kathryn Selfish back there, that'll be addressed.
Thank you.
We don't necessarily engage in the discussion today.
Okay. Thank you very much.
That was it? Thank you. So, we have the Franklin Cluster presentation. Tonight will be the first of our high school cluster presentations. This presentation is featuring different school clusters. Each month, we will hope to do this. We'll allow the board to conduct a deeper dive on the milestone data at the school level. We have allocated about an hour for this discussion, 30 minutes for a presentation maximum, and I tend to try to keep it to that. And as a reminder, for ourselves in regards to support, you know, the whole look at the milestone data is one of those things that we continue to have as part of our monitoring approach. So, Superintendent Smith, if you want to introduce the staff that will be coming.
I'd actually introduce Sue Ann. Chief Academic Officer. And just say we're really excited about this. We've been looking at the milestone data as an entire district for several years now and this is our opportunity to look at each cluster. So, we're doing a cluster each month. Franklin is our first one. So, we're really excited to actually hear from principals, hear about specific strategies that they're working that are raising achievement and helping close the gap and specific challenges that they face as a cluster. But we will be doing one of these each month and really seeing the entire feeder pattern and what the strategies are across the feeder pattern that are part of how we're raising our graduation rate. So, Sue Ann.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here with the large number of our principals who are here tonight. And so, I want to just rapidly hand things off to Antonio Lopez and Trip Goodall, the regional administrators supervising this feeder pattern strand in our school district. It's an exciting opportunity for us to collaborate more deeply on a K-12 look at how we're doing. And so, thank you just for creating the space for us tonight. And so, I will invite Antonio and Trip forward to narrate their, the journey of the Franklin Cluster to you.
I'm going to say we did this on purpose to have all of our principals so you can really see the cluster as opposed to have you on the audience where again you're just blending in with the audience. So, we really wanted to feel and know the cluster up here. So, thank you.
Good morning. Have a seat, Marty. Superintendent Smith, School Board Directors, thanks again for providing us time this evening to discuss the Franklin Cluster schools. The intent of these presentations is to provide you insights around the challenges and the accomplishments found within our neighborhood schools. We know that aligning our work at the pre-K-12, through the, we know that aligning our work pre-K-12 is of critical importance. Students arriving at our high schools need to be high school-ready, capable in four years to graduate from high school, able to have access to college and career opportunities. We hope this year to establish opportunities for the feeder principals to meet with our high school principals to better align the work. Within each cluster, we hope to get a common language around things like quality culturally responsive instruction, sound grading practices, and equity. We are confident that through aligning our work, student achievement will improve and we will narrow the achievement gap across our district. We have a great group of principals here tonight to speak with you and I'm honored to have my good friend and colleague, Antonio Lopez, continue this presentation.
Thank you very much. Co-chairs, consultants, and Lyle, directors, student representative, and superintendent. It is a great honor to be here in front of you and to bring this amazing group of principals that are, they're going to introduce themselves. But I want to start by saying that I am really honored to be working with such a great group of people that are committed to make sure that our students are successful, that they have what they need, and that we are working in collaboration to make sure that we build this K-12 alignment. So, before I continue, I'm going to ask the administrators to introduce themselves and their school.
I'm Lottie Osborne and this is my first year as principal at Mount paper. And before that, I was principal at Glencoe, which is also a Franklin.
Jason Breaker, this is my fourth year as assistant principal at Mount paper.
Pam Joyner, principal at Lane Middle School. This is my second year.
Martine Diaz, assistant principal at Kelly School.
Ewan Brawley, I'm a principal at Glencoe Elementary. This is my first year.
I'm Brenda Fox, I'm the principal of Richard K-8 and this is my second year.
Lana Penley, principal at Marysville, fifth year.
Amy Kleiner, principal at Sunnyside. My second year as principal. I was the AP there for four years prior to that.
I'm Chris Gutierrez. I'm the interim principal at Creston.
Kevin Crotchet, principal at Earlyto School. Just started my third year at Earlyto.
I'm Debbie Armentaris and I'm starting my third year at Atkinson.
My name is Heather Hall. I'm the principal at Woodmere and I think this is year number 10 and I'm feeling ready.
Sharon Allen, I've been at Kelly Elementary for six years. We're a K-5 Russian immersion school.
Evelyn Crewy, Richmond, Japanese immersion, pre-K through fifth grade. And this is my fourth year at Richmond for a lottery magnet for the entire district.
And Shae Jai, principal at Franklin High School. This is my seventh year total, four years as principal, two years as senior.
Thank you. The only one is missing is, the only one missing is John Hoard from Lent School. He was not able to be here with the situation, but he called me. I want to tell you in terms of how excited I am to be working with this cluster. Like I said before, this is an amazing group of people that we're committed in collaborating and working hard to make sure that our students get the education that they deserve, that we engage our community. We're committed 100% to the milestones. We're committed to the 100% of our current kinder students by the time they're in third grade to be reading to learn. I want to tell you that is not only the commitment for the current kindergartens. We're committed to make sure that the students that currently are in our school to receive the education and the skills that they need to be successful. So, it's not that we're waiting for the kindergarteners to be third graders. We're working with the current first graders and second graders to make sure that they're acquiring the skills necessary for them to learn to read. We have been working with the principals in several areas. There are four areas that we currently, that we chose as a focus. The first one is equity. So, we're meeting with our principals in terms of establishing the goals. What is it that they want to accomplish in terms of equity? We have in monthly meetings in which we're going to discuss what are the, what are the things in their school and how they're moving it forward, how its equity translated into, in the classroom and cultural responsive instruction in terms of how they're working with their teachers to be, to be able to interact with students in a cultural responsive way. We're also looking at the milestones, not only the third grade, but also looking at the seventh grade and into high school. The other area that we're working is in quality of instruction. What is it that our principals are doing to work with our teachers to make sure that they receive the professional development that they need in terms of how to look at the evaluation process and make it a meaningful and how to engage our teachers in a more reflective way. The other area, the last one, the fourth area that we're working is in discipline, looking at discipline. And every month, like I say, in these four areas, we're going to be meeting and seeing what progress is being made. Discipline is, we pick discipline because we know that we have a lot of work to do in terms of how to make sure that we have practices that are equitable where we don't have a high representation of students of color in terms of suspensions and expulsions. So, those are the areas that we will be monitoring in a monthly basis. Principals will have a working portfolio in which they will put evidence, I mean, will put evidence of what is the work that is happening at their school. And the next part, you're going to hear from a couple of principals that they will tell you some of the successes that they have seen in their school and some of the challenges. So, I'm going to ask Debbie Armentaris and Heather Hall to come to the front.
Good evening. My name is Heather Hall and I've been elected to start first. And so, I just want to tell you a little bit about Woodmere Elementary, just in case you don't know. We're a K-5 building and we have roughly 389, not roughly, exactly 389 students today. I'm a single administrator in the building. We have a SUN school program. We are, we have been identified as a zone school, so we have 87% free and reduced lunch. And about half of our students come from families that speak a language other than English at home. About 31% or 121 of our kids qualify for ESL services or, as fun is, working on emergent bilingual programming. We have over a dozen languages spoken and more than, more cultures. We have an amazing staff at Woodmere and they work hard to do what's best for kids. And this summer, we were identified as a focused school as part of the ESEA waiver. And that, through that process, it's really allowed us to take a look at what's working and what we're doing well and the areas that we need growth in. So, prior to becoming a zone school about two years ago, we really struggled with accessing intervention curriculum to accelerate our student learning and also being able to access our data in a timely and user-friendly format and our ability to have high-leverage PLCs that really impacted student learning. And those were all challenges, had been challenges for years. And with becoming a school, a zone school, it was really a tipping point for us last year when we were given the gift of a school improvement specialist, a CIS. And it's been an essential resource in allowing our building to move the necessary, necessary work forward. And just to give you a little bit of insight as to what that's allowed us to do, it's given me a partner. Being alone in the building, it's really important for me to have a partner that allows, all of her time is focused on instructional development of the staff. It's someone to ensure that we're able to utilize data in a timely manner that's very accessible for our teachers. It's increased our ability to have meaningful conversations through our embedded PD based strictly on student data, whether it's in the form of student work, formative assessment indicators, or summative assessments. It's allowed us to do a much better job integrating the district initiatives such as Equity, PBIS, DataWise, and the RTI work in our, that's going on in our school into our weekly conversations. It's also helped us to create a culture shift in our building. And we have someone that is able to do coaching with the teachers, someone that's able to step in and allow teachers to do peer coaching. We have someone that is there to step in and look at children that aren't fitting exactly into groups and see what we can do to help them be more successful in the classroom. And we're also able to really connect to the district big buckets of work. And so, the, these results that directly impact our kids are really that teachers are having very high-level conversations during their 90-minute embedded PD time and staff meeting time that have a very direct impact on the quality of instruction in the classroom. We're able to provide tier-two and three interventions for students in reading and behavior this year because we've been able to shift resources around a bit because few of our students that are coming up, our primary students, are in need of tier-three interventions. We're able to devote some of those resources to math. And we really have enabled teachers to work together to problem-solve issues about relevant curriculum and student learning. And we are also working this year to embed ELD instruction, do content-based ELD instruction in the classroom. And-
Can I interrupt you for one sec?
Yes.
I'm just going to ask you to, if you can, like to spell out those, all those acronyms that you're given.
Yes.
Just for the sake of the public and ourselves to be reminded of it. And if possible, also, you know, in a brief way, explain what tier-one, tier-two, tier-three entails.
Okay.
Because otherwise, I mean, I think the public will be-
So, our tier-three-
-that blind look when they're looking at it also.
Okay. Our tier-three interventions, so it kind of goes, tier-two are kids that are able to access the core curriculum. So, they are students that are on track for meeting benchmark. Our tier-two instruction are for kiddos that are almost meeting benchmark. And our tier-three are kiddos that are furthest from meeting benchmark that are getting specially-designed instruction to support, not clear enough, or-
I'm just trying to, to just, just kidding. The kiddos part.
Sorry, I teach elementary school.
No, but you know, like you mentioned ELD, you mentioned-
Yes.
-DI, you mentioned PLC, you mentioned-
Okay.
So, I can go with the alphabet soup, but-
Okay.
Sometimes that's not, I mean, we heard it before.
Okay.
But I think it's important to be, kind of be conscious of the fact that we use a lot of InSPEAK.
Okay. So, so our ELD is English Language Development. So, we're able to do content-based, so teaching ESL in the classroom through a content area. We are integrating the work we're doing in behavior through PBIS, so. Good job. And our work with equity and sheltered instruction, so making sure our second language students can access the curriculum. We are embracing our work that we, this, we have had for the past two years funded partially through Title I. We have partnered with them to do the early, and Title I and SUN, to do the early kindergarten transition program that has been piloted at our school and also Harrison Park that gives our kindergarten students a three-week head start on starting kindergarten at the, in August. So, the target audience for that is kindergartners that have not, incoming kindergartners that have not had a preschool experience. And so, that has been very successful for us and it has a very large parent component as well and our parents have loved it. Very nice feedback. They met last week to talk about that. And we have also been able to do, in the realm of exciting things in our world, we've really been able to leverage our partnership with SUN to do some nice work extending the school day and meeting parents where they need to be met. So, some of that is basic needs. With our work, we've been able to do these exciting things, including all the alphabet soup, because we believe we can think outside the box and we can do what's best for our kids. We believe that we can take the structures that have kind of been a part of, you know, the response to intervention and all the initiatives we have as a district and make them fit what our school and our kids need. And most importantly, we have a vision and a school improvement specialist that really helps us glue our work together and is that connection piece for us. As far as challenges go, the budget, an uncertain budget, is definitely a challenge. We work really hard to create sustainable systems and we're not always sure if there's going to be someone to maintain that system in coming years. We have to make some pretty terrible choices on things that we keep and things that we hold because we believe that there was best for kids academically at the expense of something else. And we have to pretty much always say, "We could do more if only," are definitely words that come up a lot. And time is another challenge that we face. There's not enough time for us to do what needs to be done and our plate is very full. And so, there's always more to do. So, got a lot going on. Hi. I'm Debbie Armentaris and I'm glad Heather went first because she, she kind of told my story. I think she told all of our stories. One thing that we have found very challenging at Atkinson School, where I'm the principal and we have a, we have a neighborhood side and we have an immersion side, a Spanish immersion side, but you guys probably knew that, right? Yes, okay. But one of the things that we find very challenging is making data-driven decisions around instruction and instructional groupings. And along with that data-driven decisions, one of the challenges we find is identifying our students of color within our neighborhood program because we really have so few. So, one of, what has worked at Atkinson School is really a credit to Carol because what has worked has been aligning ourselves and our school improvement strategy to the superintendent's strategy, district strategy. And that is around accountability and systems of accountability, rigorous core programs, safety nets, and providing our students with strong teachers. So, I could really talk about each one of those bullet points for about an hour, but I don't think I have that much time. So, I'll just tell you about one thing. Yes, Martine is shaking her head. So, I'll just tell you about one, one strategy we've used and that's around rigorous programs. So, we have, because we're not a zone school, we have not always had access to a lot of the staff development that zone schools that are provided and that's just a financial reality. But we have been able to use some of our Title I money when we were at Title I school. We're not a Title I school anymore. That's okay. To participate and to kind of sneak in the back door to some of those staff trainings for zone schools. And what we've done is really strengthen our reading program. It used to be at Atkinson School that if you were on grade level in reading, you received on-grade level instruction or reading. And if you were below grade level in reading, then you only received below-grade level instruction and reading. So, that's really not acceptable. That is not that strategy of providing strong rigorous programs for everyone. So, we did a lot of work around, well, what does it mean to have fidelity to the current reading program, which is the Scott Forstman program? What are the essential pieces in that? And those conversations were not things that we needed to dream up or figure out on our own because the Office of Curriculum and Instruction had done that for the zone schools. So, all we had to do was pay for our subs, show up at the zone school training and take that knowledge. We, we took that. We've been benchmarking students as all schools have been and looking at that data. But because we have increased the fidelity, that means we've, we've increased how much we use the Scott Forstman materials that the district has purchased. We've, I have required teachers to turn in to me the unit assessments in the Scott Forstman. So, you know, if you have to turn in the unit assessment, you're going to make sure that you taught the stuff and your kids do well on the unit assessment. And then, when teachers turn that in to me, they, they highlight the students of color. So, doing that helps us all hold ourselves accountable for students that in some classrooms, we're talking about two or three students. And that has been, I think, very helpful in creating a shift-
And that has been, I think, very helpful in creating a shift among our staff. They hold themselves accountable for those students because they know that they're gonna have to highlight them and turn them in to me. And they know that this is part of our milestones work, this is the gap, these are the kids who represent the gap that we're trying to close. So having that data piece with the benchmarking data piece has helped us triangulate where students are and strategize what we do after we teach students the grade level materials in reading, then when we, it's time to differentiate for students that are low and for students that are high, how do I decide how I'm gonna build my instructional groupings? And we do that through triangulating the data with all these different data points. One of the challenges for us around that is that we don't have a school improvement specialist. So we don't have a person that manages all that data for us. So I have been doing some of that and I, I obviously can't do all of that. And I have one FTE that I kept as reading intervention and those, and I split it over to two people, and they have been helping me kind of analyze that data. But we certainly have not been able to do that at the level that Heather's SIS had, has been able to lead her school in doing that. I will also tell you that one of the things that makes it very difficult is that some of the difficult decisions that we have to make as, as principals. I chose to keep that one FTE at Atkinson School. And that means that we lost some other things. And it was really a community conversation to figure out, well, we want music for everyone, but we want reading for everyone. And in order to get reading for everyone, some kids have to have more FTE. So that was a very difficult conversation that we had to have. And community members, I think some of them, you will remember them because they came to your meetings last year, insisted that they, they did feel that's not their own kid, someone else's kid, needed that, that FTE. So that is always a challenge, always a challenge. But again, I think what's been successful for us, what's been, what's helped us have results is to align our school improvement plan to superintendent's work and the work that is being carried out in those zone schools. Thanks.
Well, it's my pleasure and honor to introduce Shay James, Principal of Franklin High School, a school that has a long and proud tradition, a very dedicated community, including a very loyal alumni base. During the high school system design meetings, more than a thousand people attended, parents, students, alumni, and packed that auditorium. Franklin has a deep commitment to all its students. The work of Principal James and the teachers at Franklin has made a significant difference, especially in raising the achievement of students of color. Their efforts have gained national and local attention. Franklin's ranked sixteenth among, amongst Oregon schools, high schools by US News. Their Advanced Scholars Program has been nationally recognized for their support and access to advanced placement courses, dramatically increasing the number of students of color taking AP classes. And then last year, many of you were there, Franklin was featured by the Oregon Department of Education for its focus on equity and excellence. Shay is an incredible advocate for her community, for her students and her staff, and I'm proud to work with her. Shay.
Thank you. Tara Gonzalez and members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to speak about Franklin's accomplishments and challenges today. In many ways Franklin High School has been an example of our district's aspirations to deliver both excellence and equity. We're proud of what we've accomplished and we're excited about the ways our school is changing. At the same time, we face challenges that are unique to Franklin and challenges that are shared by other schools. Let me begin by sharing some of the many things I am proud of about Franklin. The first is our school's commitment to equity. Starting under the leadership of the late Dr. Charles Hobson, Franklin has pioneered school-wide efforts to make equity a focus of instruction and our school's culture and climate. Starting with courageous conversations, we have made equity a consistent strand of our professional development. In addition, our teachers and administrators conduct quarterly reviews of our disaggregated student data and we discuss culturally competent strategies to improve our results and reduce disparities in the classroom. Our focus on equity has driven a school-wide commitment to wrapping our arms around all of our kids and providing them both, providing them with both challenges and supports. From our ninth grade academies to our weekly meetings to identify and help students who are at risk of dropping out. Our goal is to build strong and supportive relationships that keep students on track. Through our Advanced Scholars Program, we are also raising expectations and giving our students the opportunity to take advanced placement and dual college credit courses, putting them on the road to college success. I'm also proud of the way our school has become larger and a stronger community following the merge of Marshall and Franklin. I am pleased that Franklin's focus on both equity and excellence has produced state and national recognition for the accomplishments of our students and staff, and Tripp just mentioned a few of them. Last, and I'll, and I'll repeat because we're proud of them. Last school year, we received a celebrating student success award from the Oregon Department of Education for our work towards closing the achievement gap. Earlier this year, Franklin was ranked as the sixteenth best high school in Oregon and recognized nationally by the US News and World Reports. And Franklin also received a spotlight on success award for achievement in access and equity from the College Board. I am particularly proud of the state and national recognition that Franklin has received because our school has had high percentages of students of color and high numbers of students who qualify for free and reduced lunch. Franklin has shown that race and income do not always predict student achievement or student school success. In fact, we know that high schools can close the gap, raise graduation rates, provide access and support for advanced placement courses, and other important measures of academic excellence. Because Franklin has experienced it, and yet we also know we have a lot more work to do. At the same time, our demographics are changing. Franklin now has the highest special education population among our high schools, I think with five more students than Madison, so not a lot, but we're there, and is the home to district-wide special education program, which is reflected in our school data. We also have the second highest English language learners population among our high schools, second to Madison by one student. And I think that this number often goes unnoticed, we have the highest number of students on free and reduced lunch. We don't have the highest percentage, but we have the highest straight numbers at over eight hundred kids in our school. This evolution in our student population offers Franklin new challenges, but also new opportunities. And as a staff, we view last year's student achievement data as a new baseline because we became a new school. At the same time, here's what is not changing at Franklin. Our goal is to close the gap and help all students succeed. Just as our enrollment has increased, we will work hard to raise student achievement for every student, every group of students in our school. I just really wanna thank you for the opportunity to share our successes and our challenge tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
You done with your presentations, is that correct? You're right on time. That's great. So at this point, we're gonna open it up for, for discussion and questions from the, from the board. We all received a packet of information in regards to the Franklin Cluster school profiles and in addition to the presentation that we got here today. So question, comments?
And you received the milestone data for this cluster.
No, I had one question is, I was looking at how many feeder schools there are, you've got fourteen or fifteen it seems like, right? Between your, well, I mean, all the way coming up between K5s, K8s, and middle schools. And we have, over the years, converted some middle schools to K8s or some K5s, K8s, and it looks like you have a pretty good mix of kids coming in either through a K8 model or through a middle school model. As those kids arrive at your doorstep, do you have, can you, can you tell any differences in how well they're prepared for high school? Because each of the models has different things that are wonderful about them and each of the models has things that aren't. Can you, can you give us any sense of that?
In terms of academics, I wouldn't say that it's greatly noticeable. In terms of student experiences and what they've been able to have access to prior to coming, that is noticeable. You know, have students had, have the opportunity to change classes in the hallway? Have they had an opportunity to have lockers? What have they been exposed to? That we can see when they come in the door.
And in terms of them continuing on and graduating, do you see any difference in, in kids who have been through a K8 versus a middle sc-? I don't know if we have data on this district-wide, so I was just kind of curious if you have any sense of that. And we could, I could-
We haven't, we haven't looked at that data in particular. What I can tell you anecdotally is we were really worried this year about the math core curriculum and students coming, you know, prior students started their Algebra I, II, freshman at chapter one, and this year they were gonna be starting at chapter five. And I'll tell ya, I had three teachers in my office the other day telling our team, our admin team, how the teachers at our feeder schools rocked it last year like they've never seen before because kids know, they said they are ready and really in each class they can count the number of kids on one hand that really are not at benchmark and not ready to start at chapter five. So it was the biggest, that was the most students that they've seen come in this year at any particular time. And math, we were really excited about that because we were very nervous.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
So is that a result of the new math curriculum from last year?
Is that the change that occurred last year? That these students went through that?
My counterparts could probably talk to that a little bit better. We, this has been new to us. We haven't been, high schools really haven't been at the table through this math piece and so we're kinda just coming in and, and learning, but we were worried and incredibly surprised, pleasantly surprised for all groups of students, so I don't know if one of them-
And after very recently, you were involved, you were involved in quite a bit on the math?
Yes.
Is there, is there, can we get you to that too? That's it, you can step up a little bit or?
Yeah.
I should like to have colleagues up there.
So yeah, the, the answer to that is that the first four chapters of what was ninth grade algebra didn't move down last, starting last year to eighth grade in the core program math.
So how's it now that you're on the, on the other side from this central administration into the actual implementation on the, on the direct?
In terms of, you know, what I see personally, in terms of the, the changes, yeah, it's, it's, it's an interesting shift and it's one that I made actually one other time before in my career. And I think that the, the biggest shift that, you know, for me personally, that's, that's gratifying is to be able to work with kids every day again. I think that it's, you know, a human response to, to doing work in a, in a, in an office setting is to somehow not, I wouldn't say lose, lose perspective, but it's difficult to maintain perspective on working with kids every day when you're not around kids every day. And so for me personally, that's been very, very gratifying and I'm really glad to be doing what I'm doing.
So you recommended all central administrators to make sure that they-
It's funny, I was just having this conversation today with, with Jolly who came out for a visit. She came out to Glencoe and I, I think it's, it would be a really, a really great thing for, for everybody that works centrally to have an opportunity to, to be in schools.
Thank you. Other questions?
In our materials that we received this weekend included your milestones work and I would be remiss, or we all would be remiss if we didn't acknowledge the great strides that have been made in every single category. You guys are improving and that is really wonderful to see. But Shay, you just briefly mentioned your Advanced Scholars Program. Would you go into a little more detail about that? Because I think that's, that's a pretty special program at Franklin and one that I hope that we're gonna be replicating other, around the district.
It is, and, and the Advanced Scholars, one of our challenges has been funding.
Can you, can you explain what it is for the public out there?
Yeah, absolutely, I will. For us, our, our students that opt in, sorry, it's optional for students to opt into the program. When they choose to do so, they make a commitment that they will maintain a certain grade point average. They also maintain that over the four years, they will take a certain amount of advanced placement courses or dual college credit courses. They are also each given a mentor and they meet with a mentor on a regular basis during lunch, the mentor's talking about all aspects, you know, looking at their transcripts with them, having conversations about college and beyond. And also students, by being in this program, they agree to sit in on additional courses and, and this is really at their own time, like lunch, they might pop into a pre-AP strategy course that teaches them how to do AP strategies. So, you know, you've got the high expectations, but the program really gives the support so that students can meet that, those expectations. So it's not that they're just left to founder on their own. I think what has been particularly incredible at Franklin is the amount of underrepresented students that are now participating in AP as a result of our advanced placement program. We have about, I'd say twenty-five to thirty percent of the school involved in it, it's pretty incredible. It's a program that our community is behind and when you say what it is in the community, a lot of people know what it is. And so, and, and for the last few years, that we can proudly say that every single student that's been in the advanced placement program has gone on to college.
Can you talk a little bit more about how you identify or encourage students to be part of this program so that it's not, there isn't the underrepresentation problem?
Right. So because the mentors are teachers in the building and folks in the building, I'm also a mentor of a, not quite as many as the teachers take, but we do a lot of personal invitations with students. There's a lot of advertisement that happens in the classroom because it's all, you know, homegrown and it's in there, it's, we really get out and get after it. A lot of informational meetings and then of course pizza never hurts for lunch to help get students there to, to hear the information, so. And then also student to student, we have a peer mentor program in our building that also a lot of the students are telling other students about it and, and you gotta get in there. And sometimes we do a little will and deal, you know? We have a student that might end up in our office for a discipline and, and that might be the hook that we use to go a different route rather than a punitive, so all kinds of different avenues.
So it's interesting you should say that particular piece because, you know, in our packets, we, I love these little fact sheets about the schools, I think it's really interesting, kinda nerdy, but the, the school environment, the comparable district average for student suspension is seven and a half percent, about three, less than three and a half percent for students at, at Franklin. And I'm interested in hearing maybe why that is and are there alternatives to suspension that you found have worked equally or as well or better?
Yeah, I definitely have to, we have a peer mediation program in our building that's completely ran by students, they're trained. It's an incredible program. We have one of our teachers, Anybal Rivera, who's ran that for several years. We also have, we do in-school suspension, which, you know, is a form of suspension, but it also keeps kids in school and allows them to do their homework and not just kind of, you know, outside and on the streets. And I think that our equity work really has also played a role in, you know, as I mentioned, we're looking at data on a quarterly basis with teachers. So they're actually looking at each one of their individual pieces of data on discipline and grade by subcategories, so I, those are some of the things that are happening. And, and I would be remiss to say, you know, I, you have administrators of color in the building that I think also plays a role, and I don't think that that's a have to, but I, I think that that does play a role in it.
Yeah. Thank you.
So I had kind of a follow-up, maybe it's more for, for Tripp or Antonio, just in terms of when we have these best practices that are clearly succeeding and really making a difference in a school, and I know there are conversations between clusters, it's great that you have this very cluster-wide focus and cohesion, but-
but to what extent are we really sharing and/or encouraging, requiring, whatever, that the best practices be applied in other schools and the district? Other high schools in particular, in this instance, a real, really important high school strategy.
I know this year we're having an additional high school meeting each month. And part of that is, there's two things. One for me is a big one is sound grading practices, that all of the high school principals want to get involved in that conversation. And then the rest of the time is really about sharing.
Folks at home need to hear.
So last year we had a once a month leadership and we didn't have a second time really to meet as a group. And so this year, all of the RAs really wanted to have more time to work with our respective principals, to be able to talk about best practices. And so we now have about a four hour period, third Thursday of each month. And so for me, one of the things is sound grading practices. That's a, just a non-negotiable because I think getting that consistency and talking about best practices around assessment and identifying the needs of our kids is important. But then the other time is really about sharing out practices that are occurring in our schools. And I know with Antonio and Sasha and others, we've talked about, how can we bring our feeder principals together with our high school principal to talk about things around what I'll call academic civilities, behavioral expectations? Because if we really do believe in the neighborhood school concept, there's no reason why we shouldn't be aligning practices from one school to the next, from one grade level to the next. So that when students do arrive at Franklin, for example, it's not like we're having to teach them things that they haven't already learned. And so we're excited about getting that conversation going. So I know with all of the high school principals, I've given them my support to provide the mechanism, if you will, to bring people together at the high school to be able to do that. So now it's a matter of coordinating that, that opportunity.
I mean, it's always that challenge of not wanting it to be, you know, cookie cutter. Each schools have their individual character and so forth. And yet wanting to make sure that the urgency is clear and that we are moving forward in an aligned way as a district. And we've identified the problem and we're seeing some examples of what really is working. So just, I think we're all pretty eager to see, understanding that there can be some differences, but I don't know that there really are. I mean, we've got kids being suspended who shouldn't be out of school and who should be encouraged to reach their potential through their courses and, you know, AP, whatever. So I just want to put a word in for, let's keep, let's have more folks doing what, what you're doing. And I know there's other things, great things happening at other high schools as well that want to apply they aren't. But I'm just, it's just that urgency and let's, let's be willing to change what we're doing.
So the only other one I'd call out because of what the, a lot of.
The practice sharing occurs in the, in the, the high school specific meetings or in the cluster meetings. Also our leadership academies this year, we have a group of, I think it's almost 20, 23, 25 principals who are driving the content of that and really looking at how they're making visible practices that are working and sharing practice on all sorts of things. But it's really being driven by principal need and, and, and ability to make visible things that are working.
And I think it's important to note that, you know, as colleagues, we reach out to each other and we're doing a lot of that work. I, you know, just a couple of weeks ago, I had a phone call from Vivian and hey, I'm coming over to your school on Friday. I want to see what you're doing here. And, you know, we've had some conversations with Carol Benson and Madison and I could say it all, but, and I, and I can only imagine that that's happening as well.
Yeah, yes, and I'm gonna put Antonio on the spot in a minute here.
So as, as you all have been talking, I've been hearing things like, you know, one of you is an instructional specialist. One of you has a peer mediation program, another has a school improvement specialist. And I keep thinking about all the different strategies that you use with the limited funds that you have. And I guess one of the questions I was trying to think about is if at some point the governor and the Oregon Education Investment Board actually decided to invest more in education? Is there, would there be any consensus about how additional funds might be used to really raise the bar in terms of student achievement or closing the achievement gap? Is, I mean, is there anything that kind of screams out to principals like, oh my God, I would love to have?
I know, and Shay can echo this, I'm sure, and the principals here, but last year there was unanimous support for the instructional specialists that worked at the high schools. And, you know, we weren't able to preserve that position in its entirety at all of our schools. But that was a position that across the board, principals really, really valued the work that instructional specialists provided in our schools. At, at the high school level with the instruct, the essential skills requirement now, having a dedicated person in the building to really monitor that work, to help teachers understand, for example, how to embed writing in the curriculum, those kinds of things. It's incredibly valuable.
And I would also say a full, a full day schedule for kids would be imperative. That would be probably top priority for high school.
And how about at the middle school, K five, K eight levels, or anything that would kind of stand out?
Okay, are you gonna write this down? Seeing as how I am not a Title I school or a zone school, I'm just a school. I think absolutely what Heather talked about, a school improvement specialist, someone who can manage all the data, but then in addition to that interventionist. And that's teachers who can work with your lowest students, which are the tier two, tier three students, with your lowest students while that homeroom teacher is working with a different group. So it would be having our lowest students not have any independent work time, which for our lowest student is, is not super productive time. So interventionist and school improvement specialist for sure.
That's good. Thank you. So just a, we have a couple of specific results called out at a couple of schools in terms of vast improvements for Latino students. So we heard from Atkinson, it sounds like the highlighting piece of where your teachers are being held accountable for the students of color maybe contributing to you because you went from, at the third grade milestone for, from 47% to 72% for Hispanic students. But I was wondering about Bridger, it's, and it's only 16, but you had a jump from 13% to 56%. So I just didn't know if there are any specific strategies just along the same lines of hearing about best practices? And congratulations to everybody for your great gains. It was very exciting to meet you.
Well, I'm gonna echo my colleagues' need for the school improvement specialist and the interventionist. I'm fortunate enough to have both of those in my building. And a lot of that came from getting the school improvement specialist for the first time, putting clear structures in for response to intervention that had been missing prior to that in my school. And so every student is in a tier, in the appropriate tier. We benchmark, we progress monitor, we reevaluate, we come together as teams to do that. So the school improvement specialist leads a lot of that work, but without the interventionist piece, it can't happen. So it's, it's that one-two punch, if you will. And I'll tell you the one thing that keeps me up at nights right now is I'm thinking about staffing for next year already and knowing that the school improvement specialist were a two-year position and that I won't have that gift from the district and what's gonna happen next year and how am I gonna make this work for my kids next year?
The school improvement specialist is really focused on the data?
Part, partly data, partly professional development.
So working with teachers on improving their practice?
Right.
And the interventionist is someone who's really working with students?
Exactly, exactly. So for instance, my school improvement specialist will pull together every grade level team about once a month and they will work for half days, we have a half day subs. And they will come together and look at every single child in the, in the grade level and talk about where they are right now, where they were. Are they staying at core? Are they falling below? Are we seeing kids jump from third tier to one? And if we are, what is that teacher doing? Or what is that interventionist doing? And how do we start replicating that out at every grade level?
That's great.
Thank you.
So I hope the Oregon Education Investment Board and Dr. Rudy Crew are listening to all of you tonight.
You have to send them the tape. You know, by my, by my timing, I think it's still close to 10 minutes. And, and by the way, the board can extend the time if needed. You know, one of the, again, I, I think that as, as my colleagues have mentioned, I think we're, we're impressed in regards to the, the gains that have been made, I think, throughout the, the schools. And wanted to, to I guess, look at some of the things that, that, I mean, we didn't, we don't necessarily didn't look at in regards to school improvement plans. I know those were done last year and I, I got a chance to, to view them last year. But there is still some, you know, different. There's not necessarily, we don't have necessarily the consistency across all of them yet. But I think what we're, what I was looking for also is, is the consistency in regards to the, actually the sharing of the experiences and what's, what specifically has been done to share those experiences that, where there is learning. Particularly, I think that in, in, I was looking at, you know, the, the work that was done with, with Latino students, but also African-American students, I think, even though there's small numbers. But there is definitely a lot of gains that were made in, in this area. And I mean, those are two expedations, particularly that I think that they have, we have, have challenges with as a district. So what, what, how are you earning your pay? In other words, as a, as a regional administrator, you know, working with the, with the principals?
Well, you know, I'm really lucky to work with, with just amazing people that are committed to the work. And in terms of learning from each other, like for example, this Thursday, all of us gonna meet at the school at Lent and we're gonna do classroom observations using the new evaluation tool. And we're gonna look at, for example, some of the indicators in the teacher evaluation. The purpose of that is to calibrate our thinking in terms of how do we provide meaningful input, feedback for teachers so they can, they can, they can use that to better their instruction. So all of us here are really committed to the equity work, to the four areas that I mentioned earlier, the equity, the milestones, call it instruction and the discipline data. And it is, we know that there are, every school is different. And, but as you can see from the data, there are some schools that are really doing an amazing job. And part of visiting each other in the schools is to, to know what are the things that they're doing that are being successful and what are the challenges and what are the things that we can learn? And what are the things that we as a cluster can say, these are the really good sound strategies that we, we wanted to duplicate in every school. So it's a learning, it's a learning process and we're really committing in terms of the equity work and desegregating data and looking at our students that historically have been, their needs have not been met. And so I'm really excited of meeting once a month with every principal and just go over these markers. Cause I think it will, it will, it will provide us a great avenue for us to, to really pull out those things that we know that are successful and, and visiting each other's building, buildings. Does that answer your question?
Well, it does. I mean, I think it, it helps, I think, to know a little bit more some of the specifics in regards to some of that work that is taking place. The other part, I mean, I, this is one of the, the most diverse in, in, in terms of the, the immersion programs that, that the district incorporated into one cluster. And there's that dynamic of a neighborhood school versus a magnet school.
Right.
Or, or part of it. And then the other part of it is, is that, I mean, I think both in terms of Lent and, and Bridger, schools that started with one strand and there's always, you know, the, the attrition and also the numbers that were, might not be present. So how do we, how is that, I mean, how is that discussion happening as a cluster in regards to how to best serve those students that are both emerging bilingual students, but also students that are already in those programs to be able to strengthen those programs?
So one of the discussions that we've been having for quite a few years, how to make the immersion programs where it is in the school that there is not one program competing with the other. But how can we have the two programs support each other in terms of, of the strategies and the support? We have seen some challenges in terms of making sure that, that there is not a competition for students, but rather look at what the student needs to be successful. And how do we own our neighborhood kids and how do we own our immersion kids together as a, as a school, as a staff? So that's a conversation that we're still, we're still having in terms of, you know, how we support those, those two programs to co-access and to support each other.
You know, I'm just looking at Debbie because I know she's, she's one that will rob students from other schools. Not, not putting it that way. But, but it's again, I mean, I think getting back to the whole question of how do we, how do we provide a program that is, that is most useful for that student? Whether that student is in, in another school and, but that school does not necessarily have it. And, and that's, I think that a, a challenging discussion, but I think it will be an important discussion to be had in regards to, and in your cluster, given that you have more programs. I'll be definitely, I think as a, as a board member, be interested in regards to what reflections you can give us in regards to provide some guidance on that. Because there is that, I think, you know, in the, in the past, when, when Atkinson was the only program in, in southeast, southeast that was accessible to the folks in northeast and southeast, you know, parents were coming from regular to, to enroll at, at Atkinson. There might still be some families that are leftover that belong in, in regular that, that are finishing up at, at Atkinson. But, you know, it's, it's still a challenge, I think, for us, as a, as a district in regards to how to, how to address those needs and, but how to do it in a way that, that, that is coordinated. Rather than, and, and have some, I guess, criteria in, in place for us to, to be able to do that more.
And I think that that, yeah, I agree with you. And I think that's the work that GM Garcia, the new director of immersion is, is doing in terms of how do we make sure that there is coordination, there is a systemic approach to immersion so that way, you know, you don't have a, programs competing with each other. And that's what we used to do. So now, so we're, we're making some progress, there's still work to do. But we, I'm confident that we will get there.
I had another question. We have had a new eval, teacher evaluation tool in place for about a year, full year plus at this point. And it was 31 years before we changed, since we changed that tool. Do you, would anyone have any anecdotal evidence of the impact that's having either in supporting teachers or in supporting student achievement? Either way, it would just be helpful for us to hear.
I see a number of principals that wanna jump up and, and do that.
It would just be helpful for us to hear some of that, if anybody wants to share it.
It's amazing I can speak in front of a large number of children, but this makes me nervous. You know, in, in regards to the new tool, the teacher framework tool, it's a rubric-based tool that for me has really begun to allow me to get very deep into, and very specific, into the conversations with teachers. It's no longer a did that, didn't do that, or yes, no type of, of a tool. It's much more of looking at an element of instruction that, that we know to be good practice and then really thinking about what we saw. How did that play out in the classroom with the kids you had? So we're really talking about the classroom right now as I saw it when I was either walking through or, or sitting down for a form of observation. The other thing that this new tool does for me is it lets me. The other thing that this new tool does for me is it lets me think about evaluation over the entire school year, rather than three moments of forty-five minutes that I've sent us out in that classroom. It's really structured now, so that I'm talking about, with teachers, engaging with teachers on instruction over time, rather than a particular time. And that's been probably the biggest, as well.
Okay, thank you.
And if I can add to that is, that is, the observation is evidence-based, so, and that's the part of, that's why this Thursday, we're, we're visiting a Lent school, and what we're just looking is, what did you see, and what's the evidence? So, the, the new tool, it's, it was, it was time to, to, or bring a new tool, and I, and I think that, that it's gonna, it's gonna give us some really good results.
And before you leave, can you remind us of your name and the school that you're?
Yeah, Kevin Crotchet, and I'm at our lead of school, K A.
Debbie, did you want to add something to that?
No.
I see you jumping off the chair there, so I just, you know, you know, we haven't heard too many folks on this side.
I just have to say, Partina, about the other thing, because you, about me stealing other people's kids. And I think it might interest you to know, especially within the Spanish immersion.
Providing an opportunity for those kids.
Yes, yes, yeah. But within the, the Spanish immersion programs in our cluster, we are very united and very strategic in trying to identify proactively students for whom this program is not just an enrichment, but is really their only hope for success, and that is because their native language is Spanish. And we have been working collaboratively to ensure that all students that, at this point, that go through the process, because they do have to go through the process, are able to get into one of our programs. And that's, that's work that I think I'm very proud of, and that helps me sleep at night, knowing that at least within our cluster, all native Spanish-speaking students get into these programs.
Thank you. I hope the other clusters are actually listening, because those questions will be coming up. Any?
Anybody else?
Anybody from this side that wanna come in either on the, on the teaching tool? How's that working?
Well, I just heard something that I wanted to chime in on, Mr. Gonzalez, when you were talking about neighborhood versus immersion. At Mount Tabor, students learn in Japanese, Spanish, English, and we do have a deaf and hard-of-hearing program as well, so there's a lot of American sign language. And when I came to Mount Tabor, I was determined that this be a positive thing about our school, not a dividing thing. But one thing that I know is, when it comes to FTE, that is a time when it feels like different programs are competing. So I was not at Mount Tabor in the spring, but I believe their bottom line was a 1.8 staff reduction before the add-back. But also, the Japanese program is growing, and the Spanish immersion program is going, growing, so we needed to add a Spanish immersion teacher and add a Japanese teacher while cutting 1.8. And it's in those scarce resource times like that, that you do end up with people feeling like their programs are competing, because we wanna be transparent, so I'm sharing with parents how these immersion programs are growing in the school. They can see the writing on the wall. And that's just a time when I think that we do end up with people feeling like a school within a school vying for limited resources.
In particular, when the board made that decision to channel them to, to Mount Tabor instead of.
And I'm very happy they're there. My assistant principal, and I would love to expand world language offerings in the school, and for every student at Mount Tabor to be, to have the opportunity to be bilingual and bicultural. We would like to grow on that, that we have all of these languages in the school, so that's something that we're trying to think about for next year. So, you know, I just wanted to bring that up, that those are the difficult times, when you're explaining to your community that you're cutting 1.8 plus two more in order to add.
Right. No, thank you. Definitely, I think it's something that we need to keep in mind, but, and, and as folks learn how to address that, that challenge, I think it will be important for us as a whole, as a district, to, to learn, but also to, to be realistic in regards to what's, or not realistic, but at least be aware of what the actual investment needs to be, to be able to get those things off the ground.
And we're even worried about having enough classrooms.
Right. Thank you. Marty?
Hi. Marty Diaz. I, I'm not nervous with kids, but I see what you're saying. I wanted to talk again about the evaluation tool, and one very important thing that I wanna bring, just one small point, that the evaluation tool has been, I think, one of the monumental things that we have done in our district, because it has created a bridge between our equity work and the evaluation process. The opportunity for all students is non-negotiable, and I think that the evaluation tool has provided that for us. So I wanted to say thank you for that, because there's, it's, it's objective, it's right there, it's evidence-proofed. You know, if you don't do what, it's in that domain, it's non-negotiable, and it creates an opportunity for all kids. And it's, it's a great bridge between equity, our equity work, so that, I wanted to make that point.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Pam Joyner, and I'm at Lane Middle School, and I just wanted to throw in a, a pitch for what I would consider an emerging strategy that we're using at Lane, using restorative justice practices to impact our discipline and also our school climate. And so this is something we became interested in last spring, but have gone full-on with this year, not only modeling it for our staff and staff meetings, to build trust and, and a stronger culture amongst ourselves, but also how it can be used in the classroom, and then how it also is used at the discipline level. We, in the spring, got rid of, or, or changed our position of having a student management specialist, who's usually the disciplinary in, and went with, just like a, a school improvement specialist, we have a behavior improvement specialist that takes that role. So it takes a lot of work, because you're actually bringing students together, and you're talking about whatever happened, and what was the impact, and how you can go about making that right. And it takes lots and lots of time, but what we've found so far is, through the month of September and this far into October, we've had one referral, and that's it. So if you look at our discipline data, it's. So, maybe next year, this time, I'll be talking about the whole year looking like that.
That'd be great.
Thank you. Any other?
So, Leslie, you spoke about the teacher evaluation tool. Could you speak to adding a student evaluation to that? And if any of you have added a student evaluation, or just wanna speak about whether you think that would be something important to add, or if you don't think it's important?
I believe that's very important. As a matter of fact, before we started our meeting, I was meeting with our esteemed Franklin principal about, I had an equity meeting this afternoon with some teachers, and they were developing our next PD. And it was awesome to see these teachers creating, I just sat back, and they wrote the agenda. And they said how great it would be to have Franklin High School student seniors that are graduating come back to Kelly, and, and our last PD, have them come back and speak to the teachers, and, without it being punitive, speaking to what was important to them and what was effective for them. And I, I couldn't believe they were saying this, because this was our second.
Is this a middle school or an elementary school?
This is elementary.
Okay.
And having teachers who are working on presentations to the staff with their own equity autobiography, it's an amazing thing. And so, so now I'm gonna see if I could do that, if I could bring Franklin High School graduates or high school seniors come to Kelly School and speak to our staff, especially students of color. This started because I spoke to the staff in our first PD, I had Cynthia McLeod also come to our staff and discuss about the opportunity gap. I, that, that's, those are her words, I'm not gonna take credit. And she spoke to our staff about our son, her son, and, and I spoke to the staff about my brown Latino son. And she spoke about her son, who's an African-American. And the staff really, really enjoyed that non-punitive conversation that we were having with them. And I had, the first volunteer was her school improvement specialist, he's going to do his autobiography to the staff on Wednesday morning. And the staff was collectively planning on students having input. Since they're K-5, I don't think that they have the maturity at that point, but I believe that having high school seniors come back to a K-5 would be a, a great impact to our, to our, to our teachers.
And I wanna thank you all.
So I'm just gonna say, I wanna just say thank you to this cluster for being our lead cluster, you guys did a great job. It was wonderful to hear from all of you. And we wanted a photo op moment with the board and the cluster, 'cause we're gonna have a series, collectible series of photographs, cluster by cluster with the board, yeah. And I think we've got, we got Terry ready to take a picture for us? Okay, great. So we just wanna collect up in here with the board and do a quick group, group shot.
And we're gonna take a, a quick break, five-minute break to do this.
So are we gonna stand right here and watch the video?
You know, I, you just said you're gonna try and get.
Everybody, everybody, if you get a little more shooting.
Right.
It's gonna be kinda bad in the, in the, in the hot item.
If you can keep it within the corners, Marty Diaz, you're okay.
Are you ready? All right, one, two, three.
We're gonna get started again. Thank you all. Again, we thank the, the principals, the regional administrator for the Franklin Cluster for joining us here, as well as Trip, you know, for my high schools. We're gonna move on to Rosa Parks School real estate transaction, understanding that, you know, this is an item that has been discussed previously, but Superintendent Smith, nonetheless, is gonna introduce this item.
Actually, CJ Sylvester, our chief operating officer, and Bob Alexander will come up to talk about this transaction, and this is Rosa Parks, actually, it was financed back in 2005, and been on a thirty-year lease that, at the seventh year, we needed to make a decision about purchase or continuing to lease at a higher, at a higher price, and that's the moment we are at, at this, at this moment, to be presented by CJ and Bob.
Thank you very much. Good evening, I'm Bob Alexander, Program Director, Planning and Asset Management. This item, as was said, was before you, for your consideration, in the August twentieth board meeting, and it's also been the subject of an executive session. Rosa Parks School was built with New Market Tax credit funding, and 2005 PPS entered into a thirty-year lease with an option to purchase for the school, which after seven years allowed for the owners of the New Columbia Campus Corporation, called N4C, to require purchase of the school at an agreed-upon price of $8,889,778. N4C through Home Forward, formerly the Housing Authority of Portland, Boys and Girls Club and the PPS staff have been meeting and determined that the most effective way to acquire the school would be through formation of a commercial condominium, which would be jointly owned by PPS and the Boys and Girls Club. As a footnote, this commercial condominium doesn't have anything to do with housing. It's a common method of financial ownership with two or more parties, in this case, with the Boys and Girls Club. It is used commercially, Multnomah County Library in the Hollywood District is built as a commercial condominium with housing above. Vanport on MLK are two of those examples. See if I can get this to come up. The commercial condominium would consist of three units, which are owned and maintained by each party. Unit one is the current space occupied by the Boys and Girls Club, that would be on your far left. Unit two is the space we currently share with the Boys and Girls Club, which includes a cafeteria, kitchen, music room, art room, et cetera, which will be owned by PPS. And unit three is the main educational classroom portion of the Rosa Parks School, also owned by PPS. Not unlike other condominiums, in addition to the privately-owned portions, there are common spaces identified as general common elements. These are owned by the condo association and would be maintained jointly. This also includes items like the roof over the units, one and, one, as well as the utilities, which would be owned jointly. These areas are described in the Declaration of Bylaws summarized in your packets and shown on the attached plat in your packets. The condominium association would be controlled by a Board of Directors, with each unit entitled to a board member. We would have two director positions, and the Boys and Girls Club would have one. However, budgets and other key operating decisions would require a unanimous vote. This map depicts the common area, both units one and two, and we currently have a shared space agreement with the Boys and Girls Club, which reimburses PPS for expenses maintaining and operating unit two, the cafeteria area. This agreement will continue, but has to be amended to reflect the new ownership model. The covered play area, shown here at the top of the screen, would also be subject to the shared space agreement. This area may become a full gym if the Boys and Girls Club decides to develop it in that way. In the meantime, our students are using the gym in the adjacent parks and rec building nearby. To complete this transaction, closing is anticipated on October 29th. PPS would be purchasing units two and three, subject to the terms of the Declaration bylaws and plat by signing the deed from N4C. PPS would be a member of the Commercial Condominium Association, and appoint two board members, who would be David Wine, Deputy CFO, and myself. The association would also need to establish accounts, develop procedures and mechanisms to allow for operation of the commercial condominium. We believe this funding mechanism through New Market Tax credits have allowed us to have a quality educational facility, which is not only cost-effective, but also in the best interests of the students, the district, and the taxpayers. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Before we get into questions, I'd like to introduce resolutions, so that way we can have that as part of the discussion if we need to, and we don't have a discussion then. Okay. So we'll now consider Resolution 4656, authorizing agreements for the purchase and operation of New Columbia Youth Center condominium, Rosa Parks School. Do I have a motion in a second?
Second.
Director Sergeant Moose and Director Moore seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 4656. Ms. Houston, is there any citizen comment?
No.
Okay, now we can get into a board discussion on this. Is there any board discussion? There's.
We already discussed it in the executive session. I really appreciate all the staff's diligence on this and the information provided, but I don't have any further questions.
Right. Thank you again all for your work. The board will now vote on Resolution 4656. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Resolution 4656 approved by a vote of seven to zero, with two unrepresented Garcia voting.
Yes.
Thank you. Again, thank you very much. So moving on, to, we have the milestones achievement compact discussion. So our next items will be, will be an update on the milestones and how they are going to align the achievement, with the achievement compact targets. Tonight, we'll discuss revising this year achievement compact targets with the board voting on the revised targets at our October 29th board meeting. The achievement compacts are now an annual action item for the board. Superintendent Smith? voting on the revised targets at our October 29th Board Meeting. The achievement compacts are now an annual action item for the board. Superintendent Smith can say more on this item.
I will. So back when we set our achievement compact targets at the, in the spring, we said we want, we would come back in October when we had our current data and, and update those targets to reflect current data. And at the beginning of last year, when we knew the achievement compacts were coming, and we knew that we were going to be labeling them something very similar to what our milestones had been labeled, but that they may have different definitions, we said, okay, at the point the achievement compacts come into play, then we'll line this all up, so we've got one set of measures. So what I'm going to walk you through first is that transition from the definitions we've been using for our milestones over to the definitions that will be used for the achievement compacts, and then how our data aligns. And then Melissa Goff, our Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, will come up and walk us through how those, how then that, the update to our achievement compact for discussion tonight, then to be voted on at our next meeting. So what we first have is just what, what looks familiar, because we've been using this since 2009-10, which is our milestones framework and our measures at key of student success, at key transition points as they move through our system. And we have been picking three of those that we are setting both a five-point, a target of a five-point gain for students overall, and then a five-point narrowing of the gap. We've measured progress at those milestones since 2009-10 and are now aligning with the achievement compact measures. So the changes in the key measures, the third grade reading to learn, our previous measure as, on the milestones, was exceeding the state benchmark. The state has now moved its cut score to be in between what was formerly meets and exceeds. So we are aligning with that. And, and the reason for us use, previously using exceeds was it, was a better predictor of success as you got to eighth grade. The state is moving in that direction for the same reason. So we are now using the state meets or exceeds higher cut score. And what we've now done is use the new cut score for this year, and then apply it to last year's data, so we could see the growth in our milestone. The seventh grade writing test, which was the measure we used for impacting ready-for-high school, the state discontinued the state writing exam. So we've pulled that out of our, our, our measures this year, but we're advocating, along with many other districts, to put that back in, because we still believe it's a good predictor of success, both in high school and in college. The on-track-to-graduate measure, which for us was the entering 10th grade on-track credit-wise, the state measure is finishing ninth grade with six credits and 90% attendance. What our measure was formerly was entering 10th grade with six credits with a grade of C or better in your core classes. So it's a different delimiter. It's both the six credits, which predicts on-time graduation with, five times more likely to graduate on time if you have those six credits. Our other delimeter was the C or better in core classes. The state's delimeter is the 90% attendance. So we're moving over to the 90% attendance as our, what we'll, we'll take that now as our measure. And we did the same thing of applying this year's measure to last year's data, so we could see the growth.
Can I ask a quick question on that?
Yeah, yeah.
In terms of finishing ninth grade with six credits, or beginning 10th grade with six?
We're measuring at the same time.
We are, okay.
So we're still measuring this, this at, as students enter 10th grade, so that the summer between ninth and 10th counts.
You can still?
Yes, we still are counting. And that was a big conversation about, we're trying, we were trying to do, you still want the time for the intervention to occur if somebody hasn't completed ninth grade, and this does.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
But I just, I just wondered about how that attendance piece would fit, because if somebody really does poorly in ninth grade, but in the summer after ninth grade gets your credits all caught up. And so under our farmer marker, they would be ready, but they might have had really poor attendance all year in ninth grade. Then they're not considered on-track to graduate, or?
They won't count in this measure. And, and one of the conversations we're having with the state, and as you remember, we did a white paper that basically was a, a district conversation with the state about the measures. And one of the recommendations we made was separating the, the attendance and the on-track credit-wise, so that you see them as two distinct features, as opposed to, because yes, you could be on-track with six credits and have 89% attendance, and you won't count in this measure. Or, as you say, have bad attendance and then catch up. And the predictor, we believe, is the six credits, you know, on-track credit-wise. Clearly having 90% attendance is gonna be another success factor, though, so we were advocating to separate them as the two measures. Okay, so our actual data on this year's, on our milestones, and what you're looking at, so you see our 9-10 actual on reading to learn was 71%, and our largest gap was between our Hispanic students and our white students, a 30, 34-point gap. Our target was to have a five-point gain overall and a catch-up, like meaning narrowing the gap by five points. What we actually accomplished was increasing our reading to learn by six percentage points, so up to 77%, and narrowing the gap by four points. So it went from 34 points down to 30-point gap between our Hispanic and white students. Our on-track-to-graduate, our actual last year was 63%, and our largest gap was between our multiracial group and our white students by a 25-point gap. We set a five-point target and a five-point narrowing. We ended up with a seven-point gain, seven-point percentage point gain in our students on-track to graduate, bringing us up to 70%, and a three-point narrowing of the gap, with a gap of 22 points between our highest and lowest. And then our four-year cohort graduation rate, and this is, again, you're looking at a different set of years here, so this is the change between '09-10 and 10-11, because when we get this data is January, so we will be getting our next, having our next graduation data midway through the year. So the most recent four-year cohort graduation rate, it went from 54% up eight percentage points to 62%, which we're still saying is painfully not where we want to be, and where we've got deep urgency around how we are moving that, but it was an eight percentage point gain, so moving in the right direction. Our largest gap was between our Hispanic and white students at 27 points. That gap was reduced by nine percentage points, so we now have an 18 percentage point gap. So progress in the right direction on our four-year cohort graduation rate, and we'll be bringing, we'll come back and be discussing that one again when we get our next year's data in January. But that, that's progress on our milestones and the transition. And then this, these are the bar graphs now between last year and this year, and I'm just gonna kind of give you the visual, so you get the progress disaggregated by race on the third grade reading benchmark. Our on-track-to-graduate with six credits and 90% or better attendance, where you're just kind of getting the visual of progress there, disaggregated by race. Our four-year cohort graduation rate from '08-'09, 9-10, and 10-11, disaggregated by race. And then our four-year cohort graduation rate at our comprehensive and focused schools. And you will get print copies of all of these, all of these. So that takes us over to Melissa Goff, our Director, Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, who will now transition this over into our achievement compact target Do people have questions about the milestones and the conversion from one to the other? Did that make sense?
It's raining.
Mm-hmm.
It's raining.
It's raining, yeah, it's our percussion.
Buckets are out.
Buckets are out.
Have we closed the doors?
Yeah, it's scary.
It is intense, isn't it?
Wow. Gosh, what an intro. So thank you, Superintendent Smith. So I have this opportunity to share with you about the achievement compacts in a little greater specificity, and I'm going to speak loudly, just in case you can't hear over the rain. In, in Portland Public Schools, we are raising achievement for all students, while also accelerating achievement for students we have historically poorly served. That's our complete and total focus, raise achievement for all and close the racial opportunity gap. Continuing to do this means having high expectations and aspirational targets. Yet while we are setting our targets on our achievement compact goals with the state of Oregon, we do not yet know how these goals may impact the funding of our schools in the future. We must be mindful of not putting our schools at risk of losing any additional state dollars we so vitally need to drive success for all kids. The following options and recommendations are based upon our awareness of this balance. Late last year, the Oregon Legislature directed all K-12 school districts to develop annual achievement compacts with the Oregon Education Investment Board. The first of these compacts would come into play during this, the 2012-13 school year. The expressed intent for this arrangement was to focus both funding and strategies at the state and local level, in order for us collectively to achieve our statewide achievement goals. One outcome of this commitment is the development of an achievement compact advisory committee. The PPS committee will be tasked to create a recommendation report for the board, setting targets for 2013-14, and identifying the strategies we will employ in order to achieve these targets. Our hope is that, just as we expect the state legislature to use the collective recommendations to inform education funding, PPS will be able to use these recommendations to inform our 2013-14 budget process. Since the initial achievement compact targets were proposed by PPS to the state, ODE has accepted our appeal on our graduation rate numbers. As a result, we are recommending to the board that we update our targets, using the original methodology with the updated accurate numbers. Thus, we recommend an updated four-year graduation rate of 65%. The five-year graduation rate number has also been revised to align with the revised four-year graduation rate data for 2010-11, and the updated overall target is 69%. We recommend that the targets set in the spring are maintained for this school year in the following areas: our five-year completion rate, our post-secondary enrollment, and earning nine-plus college credits. So third grade reading proficiency. This is another target we are updating to a, to a higher level after our finalized data has been reviewed. We're recommending a five percentage point increase aligned with our milestone targets that we set each year. In math, this is a new, a new target for us, although we're always measuring our student growth in math. So our target here has been updated to reflect current data, and we recommend using the same methodology as for our other achievement compact targets to develop this goal. When PPS originally submitted the sixth grade on-track goal, we recommended keeping the attendance rate at its current level, given the difficulty in dramatically shifting student attendance without resources targeted specifically at that marker. The state has chosen this marker without a tie to an academic measure. There is research that indicates students who are severely chronically absent in sixth grade have significantly higher dropout rates. Given this, we recommend the board target an increased attendance rate of 1%. This is given that our resources continue to be a factor in our ability to immediately address this issue. Our ninth grade on-track indicator, couples' attendance and six or more credits, as Superintendent Smith indicated earlier, and is similar to our pre-existing milestone. We recommend that we develop an aspirational target, and that we continue to track, and both internally and externally, report attendance and credits as separate measures. Ninth grade attendance has also been shown to be an indicator in a student's likelihood to graduate from high school in four years. Priority schools. We have six schools labeled as priority by the state of Oregon: King, Madison, Oakley Green, Roosevelt, Rosa Parks, and Woodlawn. Of these, three automatically receive priority status because they are SIG schools. Aside from our school improvement grant schools, priority schools, quote, "represent the bottom 5% of high-poverty schools in the state, and have been identified as most in need of assistance in turning around student achievement and growth," unquote. Three of our priority schools have been receiving additional support the last two years as part of our targeting supports to our zone schools, much of which you've heard described here tonight. We have reviewed our Title I allocation in order to support the one school on the list who has not had formalized central support to date. We have nine schools listed as focus schools. These are described by the state as the bottom 15% of high-poverty schools that have faced challenges with closing the achievement gap and getting all students to achieve at high levels. Several of these schools have been receiving supports through our zone school model as well, and we are currently evaluating how to differentiate support to target needs for individual schools and students. As Oregon Department of Education is still fine-tuning this part of the waiver, we are working under some unknowns. We do not anticipate the identification of any new focus or priority schools this year. In addition, the state has shared that current focus or priority schools may maintain that designation for up to four years. As a result, we recommend that we have as our target, that we maintain the total number of focus and priority schools at 15, that our target would be not to go any higher than those that we've currently identified. We would like to call out that the state is not yet consistently using the term "historically underserved" when referencing student groups for whom our current educational system, strategies, content, and approaches are not working. We would like to emphasize with the board the importance in our taking the responsibility for any lack of student success. In addition, we recommend using the same target methodology to every student group included in the waiver, in order to achieve our district goal to raise achievement for all, while also closing the racial achievement gap. Thank you. Questions?
So I have a really basic question. I have to confess, I'm having a really hard time following the state's form, and part of that is probably because I don't have it in color, and I think it's color-coded, but for the life of me, I can't figure out what it all means, and I get, I, you know...
Yeah, I couldn't figure it out either.
Okay, good, it's not just me, and I just, the state, it's just continually frustrating to me that not only is the state not providing us with resources, but they're, they're obfuscating. I just, I can't think of another word. But anyway, I appreciate all that you guys are doing to meet this latest unfunded mandate, and if there's a way to explain...
Well, thank you. I think I, I left my state form up at my chair. However, what I can say that I think is confusing about how the data is expressed in the tables that are provided there, are that you're looking at all students up again, right next to underrepresented student groups, and when we look at comparative growth, we're always wanting to show our gap closing. But we don't have expressed on the data that you have in front of you. You don't have the non-underrepresented students in one column and the underrepresented student, right? You have, so it's very difficult to see exactly, thank you, whether or not you're, oh. This is the black and white copy, so now I can see where your struggles are.
Yeah. I just can't even understand what the targets are, I have to confess, because I don't know, I don't have gray, and I don't have blue.
Yeah.
So blue is the targets. So maybe there's a way to just tell us which...
So if you, if, if you are on, if you go to the college and career ready, the page that says college and career ready at, at the top, only because that's the page that I happen to be on.
Are we going on the one that's with the resolution, or they, hopefully they're all the same? For the one that's...
It's right on the back of the resolution.
Thank you.
Immediately.
Thank you.
Immediately on the back of the resolution.
The one that's, in the resolution.
We have two different packets.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
You might have another one.
All right.
Yes.
I've got the whole packet in multiple formats. So if you look at the, if you look regardless of whether it's in color or not, and you're looking at the one that has the four-year and five-year completion rates up at the top, the column, our target column is on the far right. So the reason it's confusing, I believe it could be confusing, is this, the title of ninth graders of 2009-10. So you're looking at kids who entered into the ninth grade in the 2009-10 school year, who would now be seniors in the 2012-13 school year. So that is your target. It's not easy to identify, because it's not called out as this school year when you're looking at the column, at the top of the column read.
So, so ninth grader 2009-10 goals, is that where we are? We're going off the resolution. So these are, all of this chart then is goals for this year.
So, these are, all of this chart then is goals for this year.
So, it's College and Career Ready at the top.
Right here, this right here, over on this one where you're looking at the top. Look at the label at the very top that says College and Career Ready.
College and Career Ready one.
And then you're looking right over here, ninth, tenth. I mean, ninth graders of 2009-10, and then that's our goal, because you're looking at our old data over on the left-hand side, and our targets are on the right-hand side up there. It's really confusing.
It's a terrible form.
It's a really confusing form, yeah.
It's a, it's a difficult format to walk parents through, so as...
Well, if you can't walk board members through it, I'm sorry.
Right, right, so as we go through, as we go through and we're talking with, when I get to talk to teachers and parents out at sites, it's a long conversation. And add to that linguistic diversity, cultural diversity of the groups that I'm speaking with, and it definitely adds a lack of transparency, I guess, and...
Is the Oregon Department of Education or whoever's in charge of this going to be doing a simpler, I mean, even their report cards, imperfect as they are, at least are somewhat understandable?
So, we're making copies for you in color, but then here also, here it is in color.
Oh, yeah, we don't...
No, I don't think so.
So, gray is estimates, and blue is the...
So, this is last year.
But you're also partway through the page.
This is our goal for this year, but, and we're looking at different numbers than what we were looking at before. Yeah.
Blue is the target.
So...
You make it up here with me.
Melissa?
Yes.
So, when I'm looking at ninth grade on track, it looks like 2011-12, we were at 70 percent historically underserved, we were 60 percent. There's a, there's a 10-point gap, and then if I look at 12-13, where goal for all is 75 percent, and the historically underserved is at 64 percent, it looks to me like the gap actually increases.
Right.
Can you talk a little bit about, I know that has to do with our methodology, but can you help explain why that...
Yes, so I'm going to try to explain, and Amanda's going to correct me if I am incorrect. So, part of what I first referenced was you're not looking at the historically underserved students up against the non-historically underserved students. So, they are also included in the all.
In the all.
In the all. So, when you're looking at the growth trajectory, right, it impacts that as well.
But I'm not sure that accounts for an increasing of the gap between historically underserved and the all.
So, I, what we...
Go ahead, Karen.
No, I was just going to say, part of what's confusing here too is, so they don't, they don't show you the data for white students, and we've been measuring our gap between white students and the lowest-performing group. You're looking at now all students and aggregated historically underserved students, so it's just a different, you're looking at a different thing than how we, this is part of the translation difficulty, and we're also looking at these measures happening at a different moment in time than when we've done our measures. So, the translations are all, we're just being patient with the, trying to figure out how we do the translations, how's that?
Director Belile, I am going to take your question back to Joe Suggs.
That'd be great.
It's a great question.
Well, no, they are, but that's back here.
I think that it's mathematically possible, like, I think that there's a way to have that be true, but it, I'd want to make sure that we're clear about when we were looking at, when we're pulling out historically underserved against white students.
Yes.
It gets really confusing if we're not doing that.
So, I'm going to take, you've now gotten a couple theories, I'm going to take one more in here, which is that on this, we did not, for the ninth grade on track, we did not apply the white paper methodology for all students. We did the achievement, the milestone target that we have set in the past of going 5 percent. I believe the historically underserved is using the methodology from the white paper, so that would be, so I believe that is why there's the difference.
And is there, sorry, is there a reason why we chose not to use the white paper methodology? Is it partly because our white paper methodology would have actually shown a really goofy number, and the state probably would have come back to us and said, "You can't be aiming lower and/or that's insufficient progress"?
So, the white paper methodology for, you mean for the ninth grade on track?
Yes.
We did not use the, we are recommending not using the white paper methodology because as we transition over to the milestones, the idea was to continue to set the high expectations and the high, the aspirational targets that we've used in the past. It would have been a lower target. I think it would have been, I think it would have been 73, if I remember correctly. It would have been 73 percent if we had used the white paper methodology. This was keeping in line with the setting of the five percentage point gain for ninth grade on track.
So, following right along that, I'm kind of concerned about using the white paper methodology on our four-year graduation rate. That is lower than what we said is our goal in the past, and so I don't really understand why we would say three points is our goal at this point. That isn't really satisfactory to me that our goal is three points when we're at 62.
Okay, and I think, while, while, while Sue Ann, you can come up. I think that when we had a discussion before, when Joe Suggs, Director of Research and Evaluation, was here, he talked about how to move somebody in a certain amount of time to get them, to get the number to be 100 percent, and that you actually don't just randomly pick 5, 5, 5, that there's actually a narrowing of a certain percentage, and then the next year you do a certain percentage, and it closes in that, which is why it looks like we're not doing, but I hear that you're concerned.
It doesn't, it's not very satisfying to me as a board member sitting here to say we're all, our goal is only three points, so...
So, and just if I could reiterate what Melissa said, the targeted goals that we're applying here, I don't believe correctly reflect our actual aspirations and our intentions. And so, part of the uncertainty for us right now in setting these targets is that we don't know what the state plans to do with or about these. And so, what we are doing is trying to reflect thoughtfully that we and surrounding districts believe that to close these gaps for the class of 2025, that this is what it would take as a minimum to roll forward. But we cannot possibly be so patient as these low goals suggest. So, please know that neither our milestones nor our intentionality in terms of how we are executing school at this point is reflected by these. And so, there is just a disparity that we don't see, we don't yet understand what the state's plan is in terms of responsiveness. So, to set an aspirational goal here and then have a punitive response from the state would be counterproductive when, in fact, we and the state both want to propel achievement for all students and accelerated achievement for students we have historically underserved. So, that includes students of color, emergent bilingual students, special education students. So, so, so please understand that this is a formal document that goes alongside our milestones document, which goes alongside our true aspiration, is that every kindergartner this year is on track to read by third grade. And so, that's a very different metric, and, but our responsibility in this compact document is to, is to reflect based on what we see as the trajectory for the class of 2025.
You used the word punitive coming from the state. And so, I mean, I'm just, you know, wondering about that, given that, that I think that the argument that was used by the state was trying to get away from this punitive actions that were taken by the nochau left behind legislation. And so, how is that translating into actual practice then?
I, I, I'm, it's conjecture that that's a possibility. So, the, so the state has said they wanted to move away from a punitive labeling system, but in a time of reduced resources and intentionality to concentrate resources in places where their, where achievement has not yet happened, it's uncertain to us at this point how the state will leverage funding, how the state will act on what they see as, you know, in the event that a school or a district does not meet the target.
No, I think, I find both Melissa and Sue Ann are saying this, like, exactly as we're approaching it, and all of this is evolving. And so, even as we're, they're setting out, what are we doing with focus and priority schools, as they're developing a new funding mechanism, and there'll be a hearing this next Thursday that's really at a very macro stage, that we don't know how this translates, but the ideas that have been put forward are they want to incent practices that are working, which we don't know what that means, there's not a conversation about what the base is yet. So, at the same time, we're setting targets that you don't know what the state's response is to if you don't meet the targets. So, part of where we're putting stakes in the ground about the same places we've got them as milestones is that's what, we've already claimed them as the places we're working for our milestones, and we don't know if it will result in reduced resource if you're not hitting your targets, or increased resource if you're not hitting, I mean, it's just the, the rules are evolving as we are putting commitments on paper, so we're, we're being, well, we're just, we're working to be, try to be responsible about how we're setting them, and being thoughtful about where we're putting our stakes in the ground. And our local stakes are, like, are extremely aspirational, our stakes in the achievement compact are being thoughtful, so...
I just had another really basic question about the form, and thanks very much for the color version, although I still think the state needs to go back to do something that's a little, has any scintilla of user-friendliness. But anyway, and I really sympathize with you guys trying to deal with this, oh my gosh. So, past the first page, the disaggregated data, that's an informational piece. So, equity, our students succeeding across all populations. The way they're doing the, the goals and the targets is purely by all and historically underserved. There's, and so, we're showing the disaggregated data, there aren't specific targets in there, right? So, all those other pages are just, this year snapped, or is it this, okay, 2006? See, I'm still confused about what, how they're putting this in. It's like, it's a, it's a, just a data over multiple years disaggregated by race.
Do we have the right data up for you that we're looking at here?
Yeah.
Ninth graders 2009-10.
Got goals, there are goals.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's three pages of it.
Yep, there are goals.
And the last one is just blank. Oh, those are the optional fields, which they said, "Oh, set yourself some additional targets."
Look at blue.
Yeah.
Keep going, and any place you got the blue, you got targets.
Okay, so, so the first page is just data. It's just, I'm sorry, I just, I just looked at this and I gave up when I was trying to study the packet this weekend, so I'm sorry to be asking such dumb questions right now.
I, I think they're relevant questions, and again, I'm going to make sure Amanda, I'm sorry, make sure I'm telling you the truth. But I believe those are the, the goal targets for, for those groups of students.
Okay, in the blue.
Thus, you can see some pretty large variances between the performance groups.
Okay, so, we're also, there's also going to be different incentives, punishments, whatever, carrots or sticks for each of these measures as well?
That's what we don't know.
We don't know.
That's where the unknowns are, so...
So, can I just ask a really simple question? So, we have a four-year graduation rate, a five-year graduation rate, and a five-year completion rate. What's a five-year completion rate?
So, in the graduation cohort, only students who receive a regular ed diploma are counted, whereas in the completion rate, students who receive a GED or students who receive a modified diploma based on significant learning disability designation would also be counted. So, so they're, they're two different ways of measuring.
All right, thank you.
Can I ask another data question? I'm back on the second to last page, I think that page right there. So, it, it looks to me if I compare 2008 with 2009, so 2008-9 goals with the 2009-10 goals, for economically disadvantaged, we raised it by 4 percent, limited English proficiency, we raised it by 4 percent, 5 percent, et cetera, et cetera. And then all of a sudden, we get to both Asian and Tag, and they're only changed by 1 percent. Can, do we have some thought about why?
How do you, let's compare, I'm sorry, I'm looking at ninth grade on track. Okay.
At the 2008, 2009 ninth graders, or excuse me, the 2011, 2012 ninth graders, all in red, and I'm comparing down to the 2012, 2013 ninth grade on track.
Oh, okay.
So, the bottom row of the top grid and the bottom row of the last grid.
So, different kids?
Right.
Okay.
The next-year kids.
Okay.
So, again, the, the methodology is back mapping from 100 percent and the difference in between where students are currently performing to that 100 percent marker. So, when you back map and students are already performing at a higher level...
There's less movement, that needs to be.
There's less movement, yeah.
Do we have, respecting Director Sargent's comment about that a 3 percent graduation goal feels really dissatisfying, and knowing, hearing our explanation that that's not how we're conducting our school or our goals, but we submitted with other districts, correct, the, the white paper methodology and said we propose using this. Have, what have been the discussions? Has the state come back and said, "Well, that's a really good methodology, we should adopt that," or have they given any feedback about that?
You know, so I know they've received it, and there's, I've been in informal conversations, so I don't know in terms of what I would represent as the state's conversation about it. And I do think, like, they did send letters back to a number of districts and said, "These aren't high, these aren't aggressive enough, these aren't high enough. We were not one of those districts because we had originally submitted and said, 'We're going to come back and re, and reestablish targets in October when we have data.'" This is, so, I know part, elements that came through in the white paper have been a regular part of the discussion as people are grappling with this and how to use this,
If Portland Public Schools comes up with aspirational goals, will we publish those anywhere, make them public anywhere? Are we going to come up with aspirational goals, or are we going to stick with these?
So, our aspirational goals are reflected, I would say, in our milestones, and also the third-grade one where we've said that we wanted to have every kindergartner who's entering this year be, which is our class of 2025, reach 100 percent by the time they're in third grade. So, that's probably our boldest statement of saying we could get 100 percent of our kids who are entering kindergarten this year to reach the third-grade milestone by the time they hit third grade. And then our, our milestone targets that are the ones we're setting for ourselves, which of course we want to exceed and not, you know, but, but the 5-point, 5-point is greater than what we're setting on the, on the achievement compact. And in terms of, are we publishing them anywhere?
Well, I'm just trying to, if we have an aspirational goal, it would be nice to know whether we're hitting it or not hitting it, and so, if we have it printed out somewhere so we all understand what we're aspiring to.
So, that's, that's what we're doing with our milestones, I believe, is holding ourselves accountable to those and publishing them, and we'll print those in our, our results in our annual report. And, I mean, we did every year, since we've started reporting on our milestones, we do an annual report to the community that we send to everybody, every, I think, registered voter, not just members of the district, to say, "Here's what, here's how we're progressing on our milestones." So, we'll do that again with our current milestones data. And then the achievement compacts, again, will, this'll, will send us into the state, it'll be part of their bigger picture, but then we'll have our Achievement Compact Committee come back and do recommendations on this document in February to you, to you. But we report publicly on our milestones data, which is what we as a group have said we're, we're using to monitor ourselves and hold ourselves accountable.
I've been reflecting a lot about the state's form on this, and just in general about the whole lack of investment thus far that we've seen. But I do, along those lines, I do want to point out one thing I appreciate about this otherwise crazy form, which is that it does point out the difference between the actual amount of money that we're receiving from the state for schools and the quality education model recommended amount, which is a best-practice recommended amount. So, again, just for the, for the folks at home, I just want to call that out, that the 2012-13 state funding for Portland Public Schools is 338 million, and were the legislature to follow the constitution and follow the quality education model of funding, we would receive 455 million. So, that would be a heck of a lot of the school intervention, school instructional specialists... and the student intervention specialist. We haven't, we could do, we could do the math on how many of those teams we could have in every building, and we just heard tonight the dramatic difference that has, full days for high school. So I've just, on the soapbox once again, so I appreciate that the state put that, is transparent about that piece of data. If this is going over to, I mean, we haven't seen any sign of willingness to invest from the Oregon Education Investment Board thus far. And if it's going over to be a political football in the legislature where there are lots of folks who don't believe in public education, it's just a very worrisome state of affairs. And meanwhile, you guys, on top of everything else you're having to do to try to serve kids, are having to deal with this. It's just, it just boggles the mind. So my sympathies and my appreciation for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. And again, we're going to be looking at this on.
Twenty ninth.
October 29th, so if, if there are some real misgivings in regards to the targets, please let us know, and then we can make sure the staff brings back the revised version, and also the, some of the additional information in regards to some of the questions that pose that Joe Suggs will, will answer, right?
Yes.
And I'm still behind, no. It's only five minutes. So now we're moving on to superintendent's evaluation. We all received a, a document, and so I'd like to, you know, maybe begin with, to see if there's any comments from the board members in regards to that. Then we'll move on to resolution 4637, 4657.
I'll start. Get this rolling here. I'm going to put this. The performance appraisal procedure for us this time, I thought was very, very good and very thoughtful, meeting small groups of board members with superintendent to let her know where we felt the district was going under her leadership and where we hoped it would go in the future. And I, for one, am very thankful that we have Superintendent Smith, and that she is now entering, I think, her sixth year, sixth year with us, because just like we talk about stable school funding, stable school district leadership is just as important. And after six years, only three of those have, I've been on the board to watch her work directly. I think that the district, and is reflected in our evaluation of her, the first line, it's clear we're heading in the right direction. And I think it's clear to all of us that we're heading in the right direction. But at the same time, we all know that there's still a lot of work to be done. But I think that that work for the district is a lot easier for us when we have a leader who's been with us for a long period of time, and who commands a great deal of respect in the community. She is very visible, she's working statewide and at a national level. The equity work that we have done in this district has made a tremendous difference in our students and how our students are able to achieve. And not something that I was familiar with when I first came on the board, and I am a true believer now. I think it's made a tremendous difference for our students and for our staff, to be very excited about watching the difference in how, the differences they're able to make with children of color based on the equity work we're doing. And then finally, I just have to point out that, you know, eight points gain in our graduation rate, and a nine point close in our achievement gap is something that we should be proud of as a district, and I, and that's happening under the superintendent's leadership. So I'm very pleased to be voting in favor of her performance evaluation tonight.
Thank you, Director Knowles.
I think one of the things we should take the opportunity to do, we talk about a lot of bad news, but I think I'd like to just mention one piece of work that I think, I hope the voters will affirm, that this work on November 6th, that, you know, it was a blow when we lost the, the bond measure a year ago in May. But I think we had a really excellent process led by the superintendent, in hearing from the community about why that measure wasn't supported, and in developing a new package that was really, a lot of hard work by the board, a lot of hard work by the community, but really led by the superintendent and her excellent staff. And I'm really heartened by that work, and feel like we've really clearly going in the right direction in terms of what I hope the voters will support us in being able to do in our facilities to start the long road towards improving all of our facilities, but get that work started this year. So I think that that's, that's just an excellent piece of work, and, and I want that to be called out.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Sargent.
Any other comments?
I don't have, I would agree with everything that's already been said, and just, just my gratitude to Carol for her dedication to this district, and what she gives of herself to this district and the kids and the staff. And, and I think it really, it, it sums up, I think, that we're heading in the right direction, there's still so much to be done, I think we're all in agreement on that. I feel like there's a real sense of where the momentum is, and you just, I feel like I can trust your, not only obviously your integrity, but also your, your vision and your, your kind of common sense, and also your sixth sense about organizationally how to, how to lead us and navigate through stuff like what we were just talking about. Incredible challenges. So I just thank you for your leadership, and I'm just really grateful that you're our superintendent.
Thanks, Director Atkins.
I just wanted to add one thing in particular that I appreciate, which is, you know, I serve on the Oregon School Board Association, and when you serve at that level, you end up hearing from a lot of different school board members and superintendents. And I am often told how grateful others are for the work that you're doing in Milton Mac County with the other Milton Mac County superintendents, and at the state level, some of the COSA leadership work that you're doing with the, you know, Beaverton and Salem superintendents and the rest. And I know you've also been working with some of our schools of education, which teach our teachers, and that is kind of long-term work, where we aren't necessarily going to see an, an immediate benefit, but it will certainly have a huge benefit over time. But it's, it's kind of one of those patient, ongoing kind of work that you have to get, that you have to do. So I think in terms of, I mean, I would agree with Director Knowles that the fact that you've been here for six years is huge. I mean, for most urban school districts, it's about two and a half years. And I think that you've clearly gotten your legs under you, and I think you're seen as a mentor by a lot of other superintendents and other districts even, in terms of some of the work that we're doing. Other districts look to us for some of the practices that we're doing, which is kind of fun. So, I mean, we still certainly have a long way to go ourselves in terms of graduation rate and other areas, but it feels like we're on the same page and kind of moving in the right direction. I loved tonight hearing from the principals specifically, it makes, and, and that really is something that I think we should remember is, I, you have spent an enormous amount of time developing our principal leadership, and truly having them be instructional leaders rather than building managers. And I think that shows tonight with what we heard. And, you know, for me, anyway, as a board member, I'd love to have more and more interaction all the time with principals, because it's really where you hear what's going on. So it's, I, I appreciate the fact that you've been here as long as you are, that you're willing to stick with us. And we have a whole lot of work to continue to do, and I think we are all feeling a great amount of urgency to get there. But it's, it's complicated work, so, thank you.
Thanks, Director Egan.
And before we move on, I think, you know, given that, that, you know, the sticking with us and, and in spite of all the challenges, I think that Director Relai was going to speak to.
I do, but I think Director Morton has a couple of comments before, so.
If that's okay. That's fine. Okay. I think, I want to piggyback on some of the things that, that other folks had said. The work, I think, Carol, that you've done with our equity initiative is really important, the work in the schools, but also, we can't forget that we also passed a board policy on minority women in small business partnerships. So that's something that's really going to be significant, I think, in how we invest our resources from this district. And that's a big part of what, what I think this, this district is about, and why we actually lead in equity work around not just our region, but our, our state and the country. I also wanted to mention, too, the stability that you've been able to offer during the budget process this last year. You know, 27, I think, was the rough estimate, it was probably more like 34 million, given some of the federal dollars deficit over this last year, and able to stage it in a manner where we felt ownership, not just, not just here across the board, but the, the communities that were going to be the most affected by it, and the schools had a process to, to engage. Which actually leads to my, another comment about community engagement that I feel has been incredibly fantastic over the last year. It's been mentioned around the long-range facilities plan, the listening sessions. I know, you know, when I, when I meet with and, and reach out to communities of color, they're saying very different things over this last year than what I've heard in the past, and that's a testament to the, to the leadership that you're offering the district. And I really appreciate that. I think that's probably it.
Thanks, Director Morton.
You're welcome.
And I'll piggyback off of Director Morton in saying that you've done an excellent job reaching out to students as well as community members, and I think recently the Student Union and the Superintendent Student Advisory Council has really appreciated being able to meet with you, and you asked for our feedback, and us feel like our voice is important to the school district and the decisions being made, so thank you for that.
Thanks.
And I won't reiterate what everybody has said, but I do think that, that the proof, when, when you can get a group, a whole cluster of principals together, and they can articulate so much of the work that, that we've been hearing about and putting in place, and how focused it is, not just at our level, but through the organization, I, I just, that's extraordinary, one. The second is, is I remember not being on the board and thinking, wow, Superintendent Smith put a stake in the ground and said, I want you to evaluate me on outcomes. And here we are, five years later, looking at your outcomes and seeing that we improved the graduation rate, even if some of that was just tracking students down, it means we weren't doing as poor as people like to pretend we were, and narrowing that gap. Those are extraordinary results, three percent closing in the gap, we know we can do five, and I appreciate your commitment to that. But I just want to highlight that, that it's extraordinary, and we are fortunate to have you. Which leads me into part of, I guess, a comment that I want to make that I took some time, because I don't think people realize in the context of, of our community, some of, some of the sacrifices you and your team have made, as we've continued to cut millions and millions of dollars to get those kind of outcomes, it's not like you can put additional resources in. So I guess I just want to note publicly that Superintendent Smith's salary has remained flat since we hired her six years ago. Year after year, the superintendent has, has declined any salary increase that we might have proposed. I think there was at least one year when, when it was recommended, and she said, I cannot do this in a time of diminished resources. As a result, the superintendent's salary is significantly below market for superintendents in comparable urban districts. And I know that we like to look at Oregon and say, Oregon is unique, but the fact of the matter is, we're competing in a national stage. If we were to try to attract somebody, including superintendent, trying to keep her from going someplace, and it's important for us to notice that. In addition, other staff members throughout PPS have foregone raises for years, and they also this year took furloughs in order to preserve a full school year and our classroom staff. We both deeply appreciate it, the commitment and the sacrifice, and at the same time recognize that this is not a sustainable long-term strategy. When the first was proposed, it was done for a reduction, a one-time budget savings that could hopefully get us through a tough time. Year two, similar situation, and here we are, six years into it. We need to be able to offer competitive salaries in order to attract and retain the best talent to serve our students. So while the superintendent is foregoing another salary increase at this time, I think that we as a board are interested in finding an analysis that accurately compares our salaries, both in our community, in our state, and nationally, so that we can build an employee compensation policy and structure that both appropriately reflect the marketplace and the caliber of talent that we as a district want to attain and attract. So I just, I want to say thank you. I, for as many budget cuts as I've gone through in my personal work or in our family, I cannot say that I know, other than folks who have lost their employment, which we know that is a very real issue for many people in our community. I do not know anybody else who has not seen an increase of some sort in the past six years, so thank you.
And thank you for that commitment as a board to looking at this for the whole organization. It's a huge issue for us, and one that I'm just glad to feel the united commitment to address.
Especially after we heard from all those principals, and seeing the importance of those instructional leaders in our schools, and we, we, we need to be able to attract and retain those best, those great leaders.
And again, I think that, that the, those cuts or those, in essence, roll back in regards to administrators, I think, one, you have to do, is a response to the, to the reality, economic reality that we faced, and that was, I think the hope was always that it was a temporary measure that was being taken. And the other part of it is that it was, I think, a conscious decision, both in regards to the board and also on the administrators coming forth, and, and, and in essence, I think proposing those things also, that it was a response to some of the things that I think that we keep hearing from, from the public in regards to that we're too heavy in administration, we're, we're too heavy in regards to those, those resources. But more and more, we continue to, to cut back on the, on, on the, on our ability to be able to provide needed resources in buildings and the, and the, and the, in support, direct support to those schools, as we heard from those administrators, I think, today. So we now consider resolution 4657, the superintendent's, superintendent's performance appraisal for 2012. Do I have a motion, a second, on resolution 4657?
Strong move, second.
Director Knowles moves, and Director Atkins seconds. The adoption of resolution 4657. Ms. Houston, is there any public comment on resolution 4657? No, thank you. Is there any more, further discussion on this? The board will now vote on resolution 4657. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Resolution 4657 is approved by a vote of seven to zero, which is unrepresented as the voting.
Yes.
So now that we've done the performance appraisal, the adoption of the performance appraisal for superintendent, we are now going to consider resolution 4658, the extension of the employment of contract with Carol Smith, superintendent of Portland Public Schools. Do I have a motion, a second, on resolution 4658?
Strong move.
Second. Relai moves, and Director Morton seconds, the adoption of resolution 4658. Ms. Houston, is there any citizen comment on this resolution? Is there any board discussion on this resolution?
You already said it.
That's why I tried to do it at the beginning, so that way, this, this don't take long. So the board will now vote on resolution 4658. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Resolution 4658 is approved by a vote of seven to zero, which is unrepresented as the voting.
Yes.
Thank you all.
And thank you all. Thank you for your comments. And actually, this is the one thing I will say, is it's a pleasure working with this board, who I, I frequently say, we have an outstanding board, and just the teamwork that it goes on in putting together what we put together, and having the coherency we have at this point is, is an active teamwork, and the tremendous staff here in this district, who I just feel fortunate to work with every day. But I can feel our movement in the places that have been persisting over time on the same strategies, and not where we are reinventing, but where we're persisting in really focus and, and hard work, and that's just a tribute to board, great board, great staff, and great efforts of the district as a whole. efforts of the district as a whole, so. And it was wonderful hearing from our principals. I loved having the cluster here tonight, it was just really great, so, anyway, thank you all.
Thank you.
Wait, and I accept.
Yeah. Yay. That was the next question.
Yeah, I forgot I needed to answer. Yes, I accept.
I also wanted to, just on behalf of the board, thank Co-Chair Belial for kind of leading us through this process, because I think it was a huge amount of work to hurt of all, hurt all of us and, and get the evaluation done, and I know you took a huge amount of time for that, so thank you very much.
Yes, I know, I did it earlier and I forgot to do it, so thank you, Director Egan, for the reminder, and truly, I think Directors, Director Belial's, Co-Chair Belial's efforts in regards to make sure that we have continuity in regards to the development of the, of the performance appraisal report, I think it was, was key in regards to getting us here, so thank you again. We are, again, already preparing for what's coming in, in regards to the next, next year, and we have basically what is gonna be like an overview in regards to the budget process update for this next year, and Superintendent Smith, looks like you don't have to introduce this stuff because they're already stepping up, is that what I'm-
I will introduce our Deputy CFO, David Wine, and this is part of our commitment to continuing to bring back what the budget process is, so that we're really preparing everybody and making it visible what's coming, so.
Thank you, Co-Chair Gonzalez. Having a brief update on the budget process, but I can't resist the temptation, since I'm the first staff person to come up here after the subject you just discussed, I'd like to thank you for your support and reappointment of the superintendent, because I think I speak for all of the staff that we are proud to work for this district under her leadership. I am your Deputy CFO and Budget Director, and I want to introduce Sarah Bottomley, who has newly assumed the responsibility of Assistant Budget Director, and you have a memo and a document that outlines a timeline, so we'll just hit the high points. As most of you know from prior experience, there are really three major budget events that define the timeline for the budget. The superintendent proposes a budget to the board and delivers a budget message to the community. Everything that happens up to that point is the budget development. At that point, the budget is yours to do with what you will, and your next major action after that is acting as the budget committee to approve the budget, and then usually fairly one of the last acts of the school and fiscal year is you acting as governing body, adopting the budget. So we're gonna quickly summarize four dates that are penciled in at this point for the budget for 2013.
Good evening. We propose presenting our high-level PPS budget forecast on December seventeenth. The governor will propose his state budget on December first, so we'll go public with our projections for state funding for PPS after he names a figure for K-12 funding. By that point, we'll also have more certainty around some of the other numbers that we need to estimate.
The budget development will continue through April fifteenth this year, which is the date we have the superintendent scheduled to propose a budget.
And our tentative schedule would have the board convening as the budget committee on May twentieth to approve the budget.
And budget adoption would be June seventeenth, as currently scheduled. We, as outlined in the memo that you had in your packet, there are a number of entities involved, both internal to the district and community stakeholders and partners. I just wanted to highlight a number of those. So the Citizen Budget Review Committee has a role to play in reporting to you on the budget. Happy to confirm, you've already appointed them three months earlier this year than you did last year, and our first meeting of CBRC is next week. The District Employee and Stakeholder Team is representatives of all the employee groups, and we have a standing slot on the agenda to talk about budget issues with them. We'll be meeting with a coalition of communities of color on a regular basis, too, and we always seem to have the opportunity to put out surveys and questionnaires as part of the process, and then public meetings are also your opportunity to hear from the public. And depending on what it is that we end up contemplating, we may have public meetings as part of the budget development. That will depend on what unfolds in the months to come. So with that, we'll, you have a timeline in front of you. If you've got any questions, we'd be happy to field those now. Ms. Houston? Thank you. Again, just a reminder for us in regards to just being aware of the process, and information will come. I'm sure there's a way to get this off, but I don't know what it is.
So the, we have, we have the business agenda remaining. So the board will now consider the, the business agenda, having already voted on resolution four-six-five-six through four-six-five-eight. Ms. Houston, is there any changes to the business agenda?
No.
Do I have a motion, a second, to adopt the business agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Director Morton, Director Morton moves, and Director Knowles seconds the adoption of business agendas. Is there any board discussion on the business agenda?
No.
Is there any public comment? The board will now vote on business agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Business agenda is approved by a vote of seven to zero, which is unrepresented as the voting.
Yes.
And we now come to announcing of the next meeting of the board, will be a regular meeting held here in the board auditorium, October twenty-ninth at six P.M.
I'm done, gentlemen.
Is, is there any public announcements that you need to make?
Yes, thank you. I was afraid you were gonna go right to it.
No, I guess, this is part of the announcement.
I knew, I knew that was. I just wanted to take a moment to recognize Charles Hobson and have a moment of recognition. So Charles was Deputy Superintendent here in Portland. Actually, he was the principal at Franklin, and Shay, and Shay James, who we just heard present tonight, and Petra Callen, who is the principal at Madison, both served as vice principals under him, and he was a significant force in, actually, a lot of the results that we're seeing today in his leadership at Franklin. He then became a deputy superintendent here, and then went to his home state of Arkansas, to Pulaski County to serve as superintendent, and then on to Houston, where he was most recently working on school improvement in Houston. And he passed away this past week of an illness. He'll be honored in Arkansas on Wednesday in a service, and I just want, on behalf of all of us, for his family to know that we're thinking about him here, we've been remembering him and his impact on our kids and on our district, and it was just a terrible shock to learn of his passing. So I just wanted to take a moment to honor the impact that Charles had on the students and families and, and this district, the culture of this district, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're close with a moment of silence for Charles Hobson.